Hello and thank you for joining us tonight. I'd like to call the Finance Committee for the Village of Hoffman Estates to order this evening, August 17, 2020. Could I have a roll call, please? Present.
Yeah, I trust, I'm sorry, let me go over again. Vice Chair Newell.
Present.
Trustee Gata.
Present.
Trustee Mills.
Present.
Trustee Stanton.
Present.
Trustee Arnett.
Present.
Mayor McCleod.
Present.
Thank you, we have a quorum. I will entertain a motion and a second for the approval of the minutes from July 20, 2020.
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second, any questions or comments? Could I have a roll call vote, please?
Chairperson Newell, I'm sorry, man, this is gonna be a long night. Chairperson Palafis.
Aye.
Vice Chair Newell.
Aye.
Trustee Gata.
Aye.
Trustee Mills.
Aye.
Trustee Stanton.
Aye.
Trustee Arnett.
Aye.
Mayor McCleod.
Aye.
Thank you, could I have a motion and a second for the approval of the minutes from August 3, 2020 special meeting?
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second, any questions or comments? Could I have a roll call vote, please?
Chairperson Palafis.
Aye.
Vice Chair Newell.
Aye.
Trustee Gata.
Aye.
Trustee Mills.
Aye.
Trustee Stanton.
Aye.
Trustee Arnett.
Aye.
Mayor McCleod.
Aye.
Ayes, have it, thank you. We have an item under new business this evening, which was a request of approval of a resolution evidencing the authorization of the intergovernmental and subpercipient agreement for coronavirus relief funds between the County of Cook, Illinois and the Village of Hoffman Estates. Would anybody like to provide us a short update on this?
Just quickly talk about this one, just at our last committee meeting and board meeting, you'll recall that we approved the intergovernmental agreement for our CARES Act funding, $426,000. That'll come from the county. As soon as we got approval from that, we received word that they would also need a resolution accompanying that intergovernmental agreement, so this is just a resolution putting that agreement into effect.
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second, any other questions or comments? Having none, could I have a roll call vote, please?
Chairperson Palafis.
Aye.
Vice Chair Newell.
Aye.
Trustee Gata.
Aye.
Trustee Mills.
Aye.
Trustee Stanton.
Aye.
Trustee Arnett.
Aye.
Mayor McCleod.
Aye.
Ayes, have it, thank you. We have three reports for information only. The first is the Finance Department monthly report. Are there any questions or comments? Having none, that report will be received and filed. Report number two is Information Systems Department monthly report. Are there any questions or comments for Fred? Having none, that report will be filed. And then report number three is the Sears Center monthly report. Are there any questions or comments about the Sears Center monthly report? Having none, that report will be received and filed. President's report?
I'll wait for the board meeting, Chairman Palafis.
Thank you, sir. There's nothing in other. At this time, no items in review. I will entertain a motion and a second to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Could I have a roll call vote, please?
Chairperson Palafis.
Aye.
Chairperson Newell.
Aye.
Trustee Gata.
Aye.
Trustee Mills.
Aye.
Trustee Stanton.
Aye.
Trustee Arnett.
Aye.
Mayor McCleod.
Aye.
Thank you, we're adjourned.
Good evening, I would like to call the Public Work and Utility Committee to order for this August 17, 2020. May I have a roll call, please?
Chairperson Newell.
Present.
Vice Chair Gata.
Present.
Trustee Palafis.
Present.
Trustee Mills.
Present.
Trustee Stanton.
Present.
Trustee Arnett.
Present.
Mayor McCleod.
Present.
Okay, all present accounted for, we have a quorum, and the next item would be the approval of minutes from July 20, 2020.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any corrections, deletions? Seeing none, may I have a roll call, please?
Chairperson Newell.
Aye.
Vice Chair Gata.
Aye.
Trustee Palafis.
Aye.
Trustee Mills.
Aye.
Trustee Stanton.
Aye.
Trustee Arnett.
Aye.
Mayor McCleod.
Aye.
Minutes approved, motion passed. Under new business, we have one item, which is the discussion of the village drainage policy and drainage project locations. Now? I don't know.
Doesn't sound like that.
I don't know.
There you go.
I think so.
It doesn't sound like.
Yeah, it does.
Have a talk.
I got it.
There we go.
We have two items for discussion this evening. The first item, drainage policy. This item is in the same form that was last approved by the Village Board in 2016. It regularly presented to the committee every year, just as a kind of refresher, a reminder of what the current policy is. It said no recommended changes by staff, but the policy does set the qualifications for locations that would be added to the village drainage project list. The second item for discussion would be the drainage project locations. Annually, do come before this committee with the drainage project list, and normally are looking for approval of the locations that we would include in the annual drainage improvement project. This year, the location that we did plan on including was on Carthage Lane and was going to be completed in conjunction with the reconstruction of the road. It was a fairly substantial improvement due to the deferral of the reconstruction of Carthage Lane. We are not recommending to include that location and would recommend that the budgeted money in that location and additional locations be completed in a larger project instead next year. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I'll make a motion to approve. Do we want two separate motions on this?
I think you just want to make a motion to defer the 2020 drainage improvement project.
Do a motion on the drainage policy to accept it? As is? I'll make a motion that we accept it as is.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, may I have a roll call, please, then?
Chairperson Newell.
Aye.
Vice Chair Gata.
Aye.
Trustee Palafis.
Aye.
Trustee Mills.
Aye.
Trustee Stanton.
I think I know what we're voting for, aye.
Trustee Arnett.
Aye.
Mayor McCleod.
Aye.
Motion passed, thank you very much.
Now, you want a motion to defer the project for this year?
Yeah. You're making the motion?
I'm making the motion to defer.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, may I have a roll call for the second half of the new business?
Chairperson Newell.
Aye.
Vice Chair Gata.
Aye.
Trustee Palafis.
Aye.
Trustee Mills.
Aye.
Trustee Stanton.
Aye.
Trustee Arnett.
Aye.
Mayor McCleod.
Aye.
Now, we go on to reports for information only, we have two. The first one is the Department of Public Works monthly report. Do we have anything to add? Nothing, correct? So we will receive and file that report. The second one is the Department of Development Services monthly engineering report of the Transportation and Engineering Division. Do we have anything to add? Nothing, thank you. And that report will be received and filed. President's report?
I'll wait for the board meeting, Chairperson Newell.
Thank you, nothing under other or items in review. May I have a motion to adjourn, please?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, may I have a roll call, please?
Chairperson Newell.
Aye.
Vice Chair Gata.
Aye.
Trustee Palafis.
Aye.
Trustee Mills.
Aye.
Trustee Stanton.
Aye.
Trustee Arnett.
Aye.
Mayor McCleod.
Aye.
Okay, we are adjourned, thank you.
Good evening, I call the meeting to order for Public Health and Safety Committee in the Village of Hoffman Estates on August 17, 2020. May I have a roll call, please?
Chairperson Gata.
Present.
Vice Chair Palafis.
Present.
Trustee Newell.
Present.
Trustee Mills.
Present.
Trustee Stanton.
Present.
Trustee Arnett.
Present.
Mayor McCleod.
Present.
Thank you, and we have a quorum. Number two, approval of the minutes of July 20, 2020.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any corrections? Seeing none, I'll, may I have a roll call, please?
Chairperson Gata.
Aye.
Vice Chair Palafis.
Aye.
Trustee Newell.
Aye.
Trustee Mills.
Aye.
Trustee Stanton.
Aye.
Trustee Arnett.
Aye.
Mayor McCleod.
Aye.
Thank you. And we have approval under, nothing under new business, under reports for information only, number one, Police Department monthly report. Anything up here, anything in the, I don't see anybody. Nothing there, except that I have something to read. This is a letter of appreciation from National, from Senator Tammy Duckworth. This was dated July 24, 2020. It says, "Dear Chief Boss, I express my most sincere gratitude to you and the Hoffman Estates Police Department for assisting with a protest at my, at my home. I, I command, commend Officer Bruning and Officer Chimbloski and Sergeant Savage for addressing the situation in a professional manner. Additionally, Lieutenant Julie Golden was gracious and vital contact person for our staff. These officers represent the Village of Hoffman Estates well, and you should be proud of their efforts and look forward to working together with them. Sincerely, Tammy Duckworth, Senator." I think that was very nice that she answered that, and at least that we can acknowledge it here. Number two, Health and Human Services report. Seeing none, received and.
Oh, nothing to add.
Thank you, received and filed. Emergency Management Coordinator monthly report. Hearing none, received and filed. Fire Department monthly report, chief, anything to add to this? Thank you, received and filed. President's report?
I'll wait for the board meeting, Chairperson Gata.
Okay, thank you, nothing in other, items in review, and looking for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
I have a motion and a second, I'll, may I have a roll call, please?
Chairperson Gata.
Aye.
Vice Chair Palafis.
Aye.
Trustee Newell.
Aye.
Trustee Mills.
Aye.
Trustee Stanton.
Aye.
Trustee Arnett.
Aye.
Mayor McCleod.
Aye.
Thank you, and we are adjourned.
Okay, I'd like to call the second meeting of the month of August together, and this is the August 17, 2020 board meeting. Can you call the roll, Madam Clerk?
Trustee Mills.
Present.
Trustee Newell.
Present.
Present.
Trustee Palafis.
Present.
Trustee Stanton.
Present.
Trustee Gata.
Present.
Trustee Arnett.
Present.
Mayor McCleod.
Present, can everybody please raise, Trustee Mills, you want to leave some pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Trustee Mills. Trustee Palafis is attending this meeting telephonically, so there'll be a roll call vote on all matters, and this meeting is being broadcast live and will be shown again on our cable channel, as all our meetings are. I'd like to move into recognition to the audience, this is a time of someone, if the audience has any questions or concerns they want to raise to the Village Board or the Village Staff, now's the time to come forward. If anybody wants to call, then they can, 847-781-2621. And we'll answer the phone if you ring. Village Clerk will actually answer the phone. Move on to the approval of the minutes of the August 3, 2020 meeting.
So moved.
Second. We have a motion and a second, any questions or corrections on the minutes? Seeing none, can you call the roll, Madam Clerk?
Trustee Palafis.
Aye.
Trustee Mills.
Aye.
Trustee Newell.
Aye.
Trustee Stanton.
Aye.
Trustee Gata.
Aye.
Trustee Arnett.
Aye.
Mayor McCleod.
Aye, motion carried. Move on the five to consent agenda, chair would accept a motion?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the consent agenda, there's two items on the consent agenda, A, approval agenda, and B, approval of the scheduled bills for August 17, 2020 in the amount of $5,253,997.82. We do have a motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing no discussion, can you pull the board, Madam Clerk?
Trustee Palafis.
Aye.
Trustee Mills.
Aye.
Trustee Newell.
Aye.
Trustee Stanton.
Aye.
Trustee Gata.
Aye.
Trustee Arnett.
Aye.
Mayor McCleod.
Aye, motion carried. Move on to six, President's report. I believe we have some proclamations, Madam Clerk?
Yes, and I have the first one. Office of the Mayor proclamation, whereas exemplary public service employee is vital importance in assuring provision of services directed toward the health, welfare, and safety of the citizens of any community. And whereas the Health and Human Services Department has upon its roster an individual who should be commended for assisting said department in faithfully serving the citizens of this community. And whereas length of service coupled with continued training and positive attitude toward assigned job tasks makes a profile of this dedicated employee. Whereas the Village of Hoffman Estates on behalf of its citizens desires to acknowledge its indebtedness and gratitude for 40 years of dedication and proficiency in the aforementioned department. Be it therefore resolved that William D. McCleod, acting under and by virtue of the authority vested in him by the Constitution of the State of Illinois and the laws of the Village of Hoffman Estates hereby proclaim Tuesday, September 1, 2020, as Ed de la Blau Day, and I hope I said that right, in the Village of Hoffman Estates and urge all employees and citizens of the village to join us in expressing gratitude and appreciation to this employee who may have assisted them with outstanding service.
Chair will accept a motion.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second, Ed Dunkelbar started, Ed Dunkelball started at September 1, 1980. Forty years. He's been a fixture in the Health and Human Services Department. We do have a motion and a second, can you call the roll, Madam Clerk?
Trustee Palafis.
Aye.
Trustee Mills.
Aye.
Trustee Newell.
Aye.
Trustee Stanton.
Aye.
Trustee Gata.
Aye.
Trustee Arnett.
Aye.
Mayor McCleod.
Aye, motion carried, who's got the next one?
Mayor, Ed is on the phone, and he has a big smile on his face.
Okay.
I wanted to make sure everybody knew, he heard your kind words.
Hi, everyone, thank you so much.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Ed, how do you thank a guy for 40 years? Wow.
Yes.
It's wonderful.
I feel like a fixture, so not a problem.
Thanks, Ed. Okay, who's next?
I am. Office of the Mayor proclamation, whereas exemplary public service employment is of vital importance in assuring provision of services directed toward the health, welfare, and safety of the citizens of any community. And whereas the Police Department has upon its roster an individual who should be commended for assisting said department in faithfully serving the citizens of this community. And whereas length of service coupled with continued training and positive attitude toward assigned job tasks make a profile of this dedicated employee. And whereas the Village of Hoffman Estates on behalf of its citizens desires to acknowledge its indebtedness and gratitude for 20 years of dedication and proficiency in the aforementioned department. Be it therefore resolved that William D. McCleod, acting under and by the virtue of authority vested in him by the Constitution of the State of Illinois and the laws of this Village of Hoffman Estates hereby proclaim Saturday, August 29, 2020, as Lawrence Nip Day in the Village of Hoffman Estates and urge all employees and citizens of the village to join us in expressing gratitude and appreciation to this employee who may have assisted them with outstanding service.
Chair will accept a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second, we appreciate the great job that Lawrence has done for our community for 20 years. We do have a motion and a second, can you call the roll, Madam Clerk?
Trustee Palafis.
Aye.
Trustee Mills.
Aye.
Trustee Newell.
Aye.
Trustee Stanton.
Aye.
Trustee Gata.
Aye.
Trustee Arnett.
Aye.
Mayor McCleod.
Aye, motion carried. Who's got the next one?
I do. Office of the Mayor proclamation, whereas exemplary public service employment is of vital importance in assuring provision of services directed toward the health, welfare, and safety of the citizens of any community. And whereas the Fire Department has upon its roster an individual who should be commended for assisting said department in faithfully serving the citizens of this community. And whereas length of service coupled with continued training and positive attitude toward assigned job tasks makes a profile of this dedicated employee. And whereas the Village of Hoffman Estates on behalf of its citizens desires to acknowledge its indebtedness and gratitude for 20 years of dedication and proficiency in the aforementioned department. Be it therefore resolved William D. McCleod, acting under and by virtue of the authority vested in him by the Constitution of the State of Illinois and laws of this Village of Hoffman Estates hereby proclaim Friday, August 21, 2020, as Michael Lorikowski Day in the Village of Hoffman Estates and urge all employees and citizens of the village to join us in expressing gratitude and appreciation to this employee who may have assisted them with outstanding service.
Chair will accept a motion.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, we appreciate the great job that Michael has done for us, and we thank him for his 20 years of service on our fire department. We do have a motion and a second, you want to come on up? Bring your wife or up here. Better take a vote first. Can you do the roll, Madam Clerk?
Yeah, I was waiting.
Yeah.
Trustee Palafis.
Aye.
Trustee Mills.
Aye.
Trustee Newell.
Aye.
Trustee Stanton.
Aye.
Trustee Gata.
Aye.
Trustee Arnett.
Aye.
Mayor McCleod.
Aye, motion carried. Thank you, Mike, you want to introduce?
My wife Alexis.
Alexis, very nice to meet you. Thank you very much, we'll get a picture, why don't you go stand next to the podium there, and Suzanne will try to get us all in. And there's no Palafis, why don't you go over there?
Why don't you go over here?
Yeah. Why don't you come over here, does she see you?
Ah, it's better over there. Are we good where we're at? Level two? You guys are good, yeah. That girl's good. All right, ready? One, two, three. One more, please. One, two, three.
Everybody smile.
Congratulations. Thank you for everything.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm up next. Office of the Mayor proclamation, whereas the American Payroll Association and its more than 20,000 members have launched a nationwide public awareness campaign that pays tribute to the nearly 150 million people who work in the United States and the payroll professionals who support the American system by paying wages, reporting worker earnings, and withholding federal employment taxes. And whereas payroll professionals in Hoffman Estates, Illinois, play a key role in maintaining the economic health of Hoffman Estates, carrying out such diverse tasks as paying into the unemployment insurance system, providing information for child support enforcement, and carrying out tax withholding, reporting, and depositing. And whereas payroll departments collectively spend more than 2.4 trillion annually complying with myriad of federal and state wage and tax laws. And whereas payroll professionals play an increasing important role ensuring the economic security of American families by helping to identify non-custodial parents and making sure they comply with their child support mandates. And whereas payroll professionals have become increasingly proactive in educating both the business community and the public at large about the payroll tax withholding systems. And whereas payroll professionals meet regularly with federal and state tax officials to discuss both improving compliance with government procedures and how compliance can be achieved at less cost to both government and businesses. Be it therefore resolved that William D. McCleod, acting under and by virtue of the authority vested in him by the Constitution of the State of Illinois and laws of this Village of Hoffman Estates hereby proclaim September 7 through September 11, 2020, as National Payroll Week in the Village of Hoffman Estates and urges all residents and businesses of Hoffman Estates to join its observance.
Chair will accept a motion.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second, we appreciate the hard work of all the payroll professionals who make sure that people are paid accurately and timely, and go through the maze of all the federal and state regulations, and we certainly appreciate our Finance Department, which deals with that. We do have a motion and a second, can you call the roll, Madam Clerk?
Trustee Palafis.
Aye.
Trustee Mills.
Aye.
Trustee Newell.
Aye.
Trustee Stanton.
Aye.
Trusty Gata.
Aye.
Trusty Arnett.
Aye.
Mayor McLeod.
Aye, motion carried. You give this to Rachel after the meeting? Okay, who's next?
I am. Officer of the Mayor proclamation, whereas according to recent Surgeon General's report, prescription drug and heroin overdose is the number one cause of unintentional deaths in America. And whereas the Village of Hoffman Estates does affirm and acknowledges the harm and hardship caused by drug overdose. And whereas we recognize the purpose of International Overdose Awareness Day as remembering loved ones lost to overdose and ending the stigma of drug-related deaths. And whereas more than sixty-seven thousand three hundred Americans died from drug-involved overdose in 2018, including illicit drugs and prescription opioids. And whereas recognizing an opioid overdose can be difficult. If you aren't sure, it is best to treat the situation like an overdose. You could save a life. Call 911 or seek medical care for the individual. Do not leave the person alone. Signs of an overdose may include small, constricted, pinpoint pupils, falling asleep, or loss of consciousness, slow, shallow breathing, choking or gurgling sounds, limp body, and pale blue or cold skin. And whereas we affirm that the people affected by overdose are our sons and daughters, our mothers and fathers, our brothers and sisters, and deserving of our love, compassion, and support, be it therefore resolved that William D. McLeod, acting under and by virtue of the authority vested in him by the Constitution of the State of Illinois and laws of the Village of Hoffman Estates, hereby proclaims Monday, August 31st, 2020, as International Overdose Awareness Day in the Village of Hoffman Estates, and urges all residents and businesses of Hoffman Estates and surrounding suburbs to join in its observance.
Chair will accept a motion.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion to second. Obviously, the scourge of overdose, it just seems to keep getting worse. And with all the problems that are going on now with the COVID and lack of people losing jobs and everything else, I'm afraid we may even see more incidents of it. Can you pull the board, Madam Clerk?
Trusty Palafas.
Aye.
Trusty Mills.
Aye.
Trusty Newell.
Aye.
Trusty Stanton.
Aye.
Trusty Gata.
Aye.
Trusty Arnett.
Aye.
Mayor McLeod.
Aye, motion carried.
Okay, I got another one here. Whereas people all over the world have experienced unprecedented pain and grief due to COVID-19 and the pandemic. Amid all the heart-shattering events and stories, there is a common thread that runs through everyone touched by the virus, profound sense of loss. And whereas, and whereas, no one has suffered more than the families that have lost loved ones. The survivors of the people that have died are the ones whose lives are forever damaged by that loss. And whereas the nonprofit organization Planned Acts of Kindness's goal is to bring some degree of lasting peace to these families by helping them keep the joy and happiness of their loved ones alive for generations. And whereas to help families heal from their loss, on the nineteenth day of each month, Planned Acts of Kindness, in conjunction with schools, churches, temples, nonprofit organizations, government agencies, and businesses, will provide outreach and engagement activities and programs designed to acknowledge and celebrate loved ones' loss due to COVID-19. And whereas to help families heal from their loss, Planned Acts of Kindness has also pledged to provide a free Legacy Lifelines Memorial Book to each family in the world who lost a loved one due to COVID-19 that will help keep their memories alive and bring lasting joy and happiness for generations. And whereas we call upon governments, businesses, nonprofit, and nongovernmental organizations, churches, temples, mosques, schools, and the media, as well as politicians, leaders, experts, activists, celebrities, athletes, influencers, parents, and children throughout the world to take a proactive role in collaborating in these programs to heal others and ourselves from this devastating virus. Be it therefore resolved that I, that William D. McLeod, acting under and by virtue of the authority vested in him by the Constitution of the State of Illinois and laws of the Village of Hoffman Estates, hereby proclaims the nineteenth day of each month, Legacy Lifelines COVID-19 Memorial Day, a day of remembrance and celebration in the Village of Hoffman Estates, and urges all residents and businesses of Hoffman Estates and surrounding suburbs to join in its observance.
Chair will accept a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
We have a motion to second. This is a great idea. Hats off to the Planned Acts of Kindness organization. We do have a motion to second. Can you call the role, Madam Clerk?
Trusty Palafas.
Aye.
Trusty Mills.
Aye.
Trusty Newell.
Aye.
Trusty Stanton.
Aye.
Trusty Gata.
Aye.
Trusty Arnett.
Aye.
Mayor McLeod.
Aye, motion carried. We do have one more. And I'm going to read it. This is Officer of the Mayor proclamation. Whereas the Village of Hoffman Estates and its Commission for Senior Citizens are committed to helping all individuals maintain their health and independence later in life. Whereas our senior citizens in the Village strengthen our community by having an important role in sharing knowledge, wisdom, and understanding of the history of our community through interactions with children, youth, and adults from other generations. Whereas our senior citizens' experience and wisdom connect us to the past and help us meet the challenges of the present. Whereas from interactions with family, friends, and neighbors to involvement in commissions and volunteering, our senior citizens enrich the lives of everyone in our community. Whereas our community provides opportunities to enrich citizens of all ages through the following: emphasizing the value of including older adults in public and family life, creating opportunities for older residents to interact with people of different cultures and generations through our village commissions and programs, and providing services, technologies, and support system that allow older adults to participate in social activities in the community. Whereas as a village, we continue to show our support and appreciation for our treasured senior citizens who have contributed so much to our community. Be it therefore resolved that I, William D. McLeod, acting under and by virtue of the authority vested in me by the Constitution of the State of Illinois and laws of the Village of Hoffman Estates, hereby proclaim Friday, August 21st, 2020, as National Senior Citizens Day in the Village of Hoffman Estates, and urge all Hoffman Estates residents and businesses to take time on this day to engage with our excellent senior citizens. Chair will accept a motion.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion to second. We appreciate the many contributions of our senior community in Hoffman Estates, and they built the community. We do have a motion to second. Can you call the role, Madam Clerk?
Trusty Palafas.
Aye.
Trusty Mills.
Aye.
Trusty Newell.
Aye.
Trusty Stanton.
Aye.
Trusty Gata.
Aye.
Trusty Arnett.
Aye.
Mayor McLeod.
Aye, motion carried. We do have a couple announcements to make. First off, happy birthday to Trusty Stanton. Epic event will take place on Saturday, August 22nd.
That is correct.
Happy birthday, Trusty Stanton.
New decade dawning.
Welcome to the new one.
You're catching up with me.
For a few months.
Yeah, for a few months. Want to remind everyone to please go online to complete the census if you haven't done it already. It's critically important to ensure that everyone in Hoffman Estates is counted so we get the funding and representation that we deserve. It's never too late, www.2020census.gov. Also, the numerators are going out now and knocking on the doors of people who didn't respond. The Village's annual recycling event will take place on Saturday, August 22nd, from 9:00 a.m. to noon. Due to high participation, residents are advised to arrive early at the Susan H. Kennedy Ripken Public Works Center located at 2305 Pembroke Avenue. The event will conclude promptly at noon. For more information, check out the August Citizen or visit www.hoffmanestates.org/green. The nomination's deadline for the 22nd Annual Community Pride Recognition Awards is Monday, August 31st. This program, sponsored by the Sustainability Commission, recognizes, honors three best landscaping categories, including detached single-family home, attached single-family home, and neighborhood or homeowners association. This program also recognizes beautiful properties that may incorporate green practices. For more information on online nomination form, visit www.hoffmanestates.org/sc. I do have a letter that I am en receipt of. We all got it, dear Mayor McLeod and Village trustees. I'm writing a letter to express my appreciation for Village employee Ray Norton, who was incredibly helpful to me this week. I am the current president of the Beth Tikva Congregation of Hoffman Estates, as well as a physician who practices in Hoffman Estates. As president in my faith-based community, I am exploring creating an all-gender restroom for our building. I have been in preliminary discussions with our architect about how to proceed, and the cost for architectural plans is formidable. She had recommended that I research whether the amount of fixtures in our current restrooms would allow us to separate off a part of one of our current restrooms to create a separate space. There's Illinois plumbing code that dictates the number of fixtures required for the occupancy of the building. I called over to the Village Tuesday, and Mr. Norton returned my call promptly and was able to determine the information from my documents that he'd had from a recent bathroom remodel. He was very kind, thorough, and quick with the information I needed. He went above and beyond what was necessary to help me. In this busy and crazy world where so many of us are overwhelmed with our jobs and responsibilities, it's unusual to find someone willing to go the extra mile to help someone else. I am grateful to Hoffman Estates for having staff such as Mr. Morton. Warmest regards, Deb Bockel. Very nice. Give her our thanks. Madam Manager. Well, we haven't met in a couple of weeks, so we did have some things going on. We had our weekly EOC meeting on Tuesday, August 4th. And I attended by Zoom the Infrastructure Task Force meeting of the U.S. Conference of Mayors. And then at 3:00, I had the National League Transportation Committee August meeting again by video. On the August 5th, we had our weekly White House call on COVID. And later that afternoon, we had the Economic Development Commission chaired by Trusty Palafas. It was a very good meeting, and I'm looking forward to serving in that commission under his leadership. On the 6th, we had the Conference of Mayors Fiscal Assistance Meeting again, Zooming away. And on Friday, August 7th, we had a block party in Swindon that I stopped by. At, everybody was socially distanced. It was very nicely done. And on the 10th, we had a call into the governor's office, and the village board took, and the clerk took our retiring manager out to dinner at the Saddle Room, which was very, very nice. August 11th, again, we had our EOC meeting here at the Village, and I had the transportation COVID meeting call. And then later that afternoon, I was the chair for the meeting of the Metropolitan Mayor's Caucus Diversity Issues Task Force. And at 4:00, I then attended a state and local official's webinar on COVID-19. On the 12th, again, we had the White House call. And that afternoon, we had a Zoom call with Senator Duckworth, some of our local mayors. And on Saturday, we had the Census Tie-Dye Giveaway Event that most of us were at, and Trusty Newell is the poster woman for that with her tie-dyed shirt.
I think you need to stand and
Oh, I know.
Yeah, I literally see it.
Here you go.
It is a work of art.
Oh, you have to turn around? Like, take a shot? Take a walk around? Oh, I ain't walking around.
And today, there was a, another Zoom meeting on voting in the age of COVID-19, preparing for the 2020 election, which I'm sure will prove to be very, very interesting. Hopefully, it won't be as interesting as some of us may be concerned about. We'll see, I guess. We'll go down to Trusty Kamis. We'll start with Trusty Stanton.
Well, thank you. On the 5th of August, I was able to attend the Economic Development Commission meeting. And later that afternoon, Mayor, myself, Clerk Romanoff, and Pete Gugliotta met with a business owner in Hoffman Estates regarding his plans for expansion. On the 10th, I was able to say my goodbyes to our now-retired village manager, Jim Norris. And on the 15th, I was able to attend the Census Tie-Dye Giveaway Event. That's it.
You didn't get a shirt, though, out of it, did you?
No.
Tie-dye shirt?
I did not.
Okay, Trusty Mills.
Thank you. Also attended the Economic Development Meeting on August 5th, and it was very well done by Trusty Palafas. Should be an interesting time with that committee. Also was at several of the retirement luncheons that the various departments put on for manager Norris last week and our trustee dinner for him last Monday. We wish him well. It's hard to believe he's actually retired and moved on. Saturday was the census event, and they had a great turnout of cars coming through for the T-shirts. And I want to wish an early happy birthday, Trusty Stanton.
Thank you.
Joining us in the seventies. And condolences to government, Governor Thompson's family. Governor Thompson was very influential for our town several years back.
There was.
Bringing Sears out here. I don't know if it was good or bad, but time will tell. But on his passing this past weekend. That's it.
Thank you. Trusty Gata.
Here we go. On Wednesday, the 5th, attended the Economic Development Commission meeting that was here. Then on Saturday, the 8th, Schaumburg Township had a shredding event. And to be honest with you, I never saw so many cars. I'll bet you they had close to a thousand cars that were lined up just for that. But one thing is, though, when Hoffman Estates Public Works does it, at least they have two trucks. And they only had one truck. That's why they were backed up as much as they were. But anyways, then on Tuesday, the 11th, attended the, one of the retirement luncheons at Fire Station 24 for our village manager, Jim Norris, that is retiring. And then on Wednesday, on the 12th, the staff, we had attended a dinner for him at the Saddle Brook Restaurant. Then on Saturday, the 16th, as the other ones had mentioned, the Census Tie-Dye Giveaway Event, which was attended by almost all of us for that. And then on Sunday, August 16th, attended the Friends of Schaumburg picnic, which was at St. Peter's Lutheran School on Schaumburg Road. That's all I, oh, and happy birthday, Trusty Stanton. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Trusty Palafas.
Yes, sir. Thank you for all the kind words. Leading the Economic Development Commission on the 5th was a lot of fun. Looking forward to making some good progress and working with Kevin. It's been a blast so far with all of his energy and professionalism. Also wanted to congratulate Duncan Blau for his forty years. What a great run. And kind of in that same breath, attended the going-away dinner for Jim. He'll be missed, although we're neighbors, so I've already seen him driving around. And then I was able to go to Public Works and get to see, you know, them honor him with some pretty cool signs and some gifts and stuff. Also wanted to wish Gary Stanton happy birthday. And the party invitation always, always applies, the party invitation. And then, you know, that's all for me, sir.
Okay, Trusty Newell.
Okay, not much, but on the 15th, of course, we did the swag bag for the census. Also attended the dinner for the retiring village manager, Jim Norris, and wished him the best in whatever his endeavors are for retiring. Happy birthday to Trusty Stanton. I won't mention yours, okay? And then
Think they already did, Anna. It's too late.
And everyone stay healthy and safe, and that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Last but not least, Trusty Arnett.
Thank you. Also, on the 10th, I was able to attend the dinner for Mr. Norris. Wish him good luck in his retirement, and hopefully he can actually enjoy it for the first few months. Happy birthday to Trusty Stanton.
Thank you.
There's no dinner, so we'll come over and help you. Also attended the Census Swag Bag Tie-Dye Event on Saturday. Compliments to the Census Group and to Jennifer for all they've done with it and what they continue to do with it. Congratulations to all of the proclamation recipients tonight. Very well deserved, and that's all I have.
Okay, great. I think your point about the census is well-taken. Healthy Human Services with Audra and Monica and Jen in our office have worked very, very hard on this, and we actually are higher than we were ten years ago, which is phenomenal considering you had a pandemic going on. It's just absolutely amazing. Thank you. Move on to village managers' report?
No report tonight.
Okay, village clerks' report.
No report.
Is the passport office ever going to open again with the feds?
I don't know. Between them and Cook County on the whole, I'm a little disappointed. Yeah, passport isn't fully opened yet. The clerk's office there, I could send in a copy of a plat. They would stamp the copy of the plat, but the recorder's office isn't open to have it recorded, so it makes no sense for me to go downtown. So anything, I talked to Pete this morning, and I said, you know, be mindful of that when these projects are coming through. I can't do anything with them. So hopefully, as I said, hopefully something good will come along, and I'll have better news soon.
No, it sounds good. When does early voting actually start here?
Oh, I just wrote that down. I don't have a calendar in front of me at all. So two weeks before Election Day.
Okay.
Yeah, and still I'm pushing the mail-in voting or the mail-in, ordering the mail-in ballots. I ordered one for myself. My son got the card in the mail to order his because I didn't have his social security number or anything with me, so I guess those are coming out to the houses, so look at that. If that's something that you want to look into. Supposedly, the early voting sites will have a drop box outside, but Cook County, Cook County isn't sure how they're going to handle that, but we have been told that the early voting sites will have a drop box, so if somebody doesn't have to mail it in, they can drop it in the, in the drop box.
Okay.
So knock on wood that happens.
Very informative. Thank you very much. We do have the treasurer's report. Does anybody have any questions on the treasurer's report? That'll be received and filed. Move on to seventh additional business, one item A. Request board approval of a resolution evidencing the authorization of intergovernmental and sub-recipient agreement for coronavirus relief funds between Cook County, Illinois, and the Village of Hoffman Estates. This was reviewed in committee earlier this evening. Chair would accept a motion.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion to second. Are any questions on this? So you know, questions? Can you call the role, Madam Clerk?
Trusty Palafas.
Aye.
Trusty Mills.
Aye.
Trusty Newell.
Aye.
Trusty Stanton.
Aye.
Trusty Gata.
Aye.
Trusty Arnett.
Aye.
Mayor McLeod.
Aye, motion carried. Chair would accept a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion to second to adjourn. Any discussion? See none. Can you pull the board, Madam Clerk?
Trusty Palafas.
Aye.
Trusty Mills.
Aye.
Trusty Newell.
Aye.
Trusty Stanton.
Aye.
Trusty Gata.
Aye.
Trusty Arnett.
Aye.
Mayor McLeod.
Aye, motion carried. We are adjourned.